Board members, superintendent. Right before the beginning of this year, the board voted for a student mask requirement for the first two weeks of the school year. Before you as an action item to consider the continuation of that mask requirement, as we did at our last meeting and as we continue to do, will be led by our medical experts, but also those that are experiencing this on a variety of fronts. So before I talk about what the district is experiencing right now, I'm going to have some of those experts present information to you to help you make your decision. Specifically tonight, we'll have Dr. Mark Young from UF Health, Ed Jimenez, the CEO of UF Health, Shands Hospital System, Dr. Desmond Schatz, Dr. William Bordkosh, Dr. Kathleen Ryan, Dr. Amit Raval, and Commissioner Ken Cornell. So I'll now invite Dr. Mark Young to begin.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and superintendent Simon. First and foremost, I would like to thank each of you for listening and voting at the last board meeting to allow mandatory masking for students for the first two weeks of school. Your tremendous bravery at a time when so many obstacles had been set did not go unnoticed. Your courage and your commitment to do the right thing resounded amongst those in Alachua County and around the world. As the voice of children, the voice of reason, you are being heard. Across Alachua County, there are currently so many students and staff out of school and quarantined after only seven days of school. The first week of school was a challenge, to say the least. Grappled by tremendous bus delays due to more bus driver absences than usual, and as we are all aware, four educators in Broward County died of COVID-19 within 24 hours, just days before classes were scheduled to start. This is terrifying. So we return today imploring you once again to choose safety. The peak of this surge is still ahead of us. We are not there yet. There are still so many uncertainties in the course that this surge will continue to take, particularly with the University of Florida's fall semester set to start next week. We ask that you vote to extend the mask mandate for students for at least another eight weeks to allow our time, allow time for our community to gain better control of this surge. Hopefully by that time, we will be in a better place. The peak is still in front of us, and we are still several weeks away. And that's based upon the most optimistic predictions. The sheer volume that this surge is requiring has completely changed how we as physicians approach care. Each day, we are seeing more patients in a day in our clinics than we ever have. So many kids, and thus families, are contracting COVID-19. Currently, in our pediatric clinics, we are placing holds for the next two weeks on scheduling any new well-child exams, which are physicals, or new patient visits. And this is in order to accommodate the increased demand for urgent visits for COVID exposures or children, children that have become ill. This is unprecedented. Providers are being mobilized and shifted around in various ways in order to accommodate the need, but I tell you, the need is so very great. I'm sure each of us have asked ourselves numerous times over the past year and a half, but more often now, what kind of care am I truly providing my patients? The fatigue is real, the anxiety is real, the burnout is truly real. The daily fear from a pediatrician's perspective of losing any patient to this disease is immense. This is not sustainable. Again, I implore you to extend the mask mandate for students at least another eight weeks. We have to slow the spread. In the absence of mandatory masking and continuing at this rate, the end results are catastrophic. No one illness should cause this degree of morbidity or mortality. No disease process should ever require the magnitude of manpower or resources that this, that this one currently is. But that's the reality of the day in which we are living. Today, you will hear from several medical professionals of different pediatric disciplines who have seen different faces of the pandemic and its implications, but all are here today with one common goal of extending Alachua County's mask mandate for the students. You will hear the terrifying real-time data, such as our county's current positivity rate, the current conditions of our ICUs, our emergency departments and emergency response teams. And this is all as our county and world grapples with the potential of scarcity of medical resources to meet the growing demand. A better day will come, but we are not there yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Ed Jimenez. Ed is the CEO of the UF Health Shands Hospital. He'll be followed by Desmond Schatz. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me, for inviting me actually, to comment. I've been asked specifically to comment on the volume and, and what's going on inside our hospitals. So today, this afternoon, we have 231 patients in the UF Health Shands Hospital who have COVID. We're seeing an unprecedented number of patients in our ICUs. It's certainly been at a increase that we haven't seen before. We have blown through our peaks from January, and there's no question that this particular current surge seems to be more contagious and gets patients sicker quicker. So the hospital really is at a, at a, at a point where we're having to make some decisions that are highly uncomfortable for really our community. Over the last three weeks, we have started to reschedule elective surgeries, including elective surgeries that require, require an ICU. And so to put it in context and maybe to illustrate the impact on human beings, if I were a patient and I saw my physician and my physician indicated to me that I needed surgery, but I could wait, but the kind of surgery I needed would be on my heart, but I could wait. Naturally, I would expect to go to the ICU after heart surgery. That's a pretty easy linear relationship one can draw. So imagine I get myself emotionally prepared. I ask my family to make sure they're available, that they don't go to work or don't go to school or whatever they do. And then my doctor calls me and says, I have some questions. How are you feeling? Can we do some lab work? We just want to be sure that you can wait a little more because if you can, we're going to reschedule your surgery. So that's what we're doing now. And our ICUs are taxed to the point that if we continue with the current surge, next week, we will likely start canceling additional surgeries that are transfers in nature. So let's say somebody's sitting in a hospital in Miami that needs us, we're going to say no right now, at least if the current surge continues. The workers are tired. There's no question that all the nurses, all the doctors are exhausted. And the reason to postpone and cancel, one is to create the bed space, but the other is to bring in some reinforcements because nurses don't grow on trees. Respiratory therapists don't grow on trees. We have to take people from other areas and move them. So that's where we are now. To give you a little context about kids, in the beginning of the pandemic, really, let's call it from the beginning of the pandemic through the end of 2020, at the UF Health Shands Children's Hospital, we had between zero and three patients that were kids at any time. From January of '21 through July of '21, it was between one and three, so not remarkably different. From July until now, we're no less than five kids with a maximum of 12. Today, we have 11 kids. Four of them are in the ICU. We are seeing kids in the ICU at rates that is different than before. So the data is perfectly clear that this surge is really complicated on everybody. There is no question. I've also been asked regularly, what is the vaccination status of our patients? Also, all patients of all 231 today, 90% are not fully vaccinated. Of the 11 kids today at the hospital, none of them are fully vaccinated, and six out of the 11 would have been old enough to get the vaccine. So the other data point that I get asked about regularly is how many of our patients come from out of county? And it's a little less, a little more than 50% come from out of county. But I quite honestly don't know what that data tells me as a hospital administrator because what I know is that our doctors and nurses are taking care of those patients regardless of what county they come from. I do understand that it makes sense at a public health and county health department level, but by the time they're inside the UF Health Shands Hospital, where their home address is, is a little secondary to the nature of the problem that brought them here. So those are my comments on the data. I am happy to answer questions or do what the board asks me to do.
Seeing notes? Board, colleagues? None? No question, no questions. They asked for the, for the board to ask questions, sir. I'm sorry. No? Okay. Next. Dr. Shackel.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Simon, Madam Chair, and members of the school board. Hello again. I am Desmond Schatz, and I serve as a professor and the interim chairman of the University of Florida Department of Pediatrics. And I stand before you again to entreat you to continue to do what is best for our students in our community. I've dedicated my life to the science, to the health, and to the well-being of children. And I really urge you as a pediatrician and as a scientist and a father to, to make that classroom experience safe. As I remarked about two weeks ago, I thank you profoundly for what you do on the children's behalf. Though we come from different professions, we share the same passion for the children whose lives are entrusted upon us. Now with this current resurgence of COVID-19 and the Delta variant, we are firmly back and entrenched in the global pandemic. And this is not philosophically, but absolutely right here and now. And we in Gainesville, Florida are one of the hotspots within the United States and across the world. I deeply appreciate the leadership that Dr. Simon has demonstrated in thought, in word, and action. And I stand before you pleading again to you today to remain vigilant. We have many children, as you heard from Dr., Mr. Jimenez, in the hospital, even in the intensive care unit, fighting for their lives right now, and they're infected with this COVID-19. And this intensity of the surge requires that we use the two most important tools available to us. We need to continue to wear masks. I understand that this feels foreign, especially for the children, as they grapple with social cures and fine learning. And I understand that as a father for my child as well. However, the best scientific evidence, this is not my evidence, it's scientific evidence, shows that the more that the community wears masks, the safer we all are. And again, it's not just my opinion. There is a direct correlation between wearing masks and our children's safety. Though we need to wear masks that work better for children and fit better for all of us, and we've seen that tonight, the data are clear, and you'll hear more about it. Masks limit the spread. And we already much, doing so much better here in Alachua County than in Hillsborough and Broward County. It is not about I, it is about we. We also need to encourage vaccinations. Only our high schoolers and some of our middle schoolers eligible for vaccines, but these vaccines are highly effective. So today, the data are far worse than they were two weeks ago when we enacted the mask ordinance. There are 4.3 million kids now in the United States, and there's a rise in every week. This is the seventh consecutive week, and our children are 15% of all cases. And most relevant to you, and you'll hear it again, that the positivity rate for COVID is now above 25%. That's one in four. Mr. Jimenez told you about the kids in the ICU and on oxygen, and fortunately, none of them have died since the last time. We are overrun with patients, and it is, we are having a hard time meeting that in our pediatric clinic. But we are committed to our community. We are redeploying pediatricians, even subspecialists, to primary care to meet the needs of the children. So we want to limit the children who are landing in the emergency room unless they absolutely need it. But we need your help. Just like you, our nurses and staff are burned out with this long epidemic. We want this to be over, but we aren't there yet. I strongly believe that the two weeks of mandatory masking is working and that the lag effect of what we are doing now in Alachua County will help us not be further overburdened in the next few weeks. Continuation of masking is needed until we see signs of a community decrease. When that happens in the next few weeks, I will be the first, among the first, to happily wave my mask in the air, and I won't do that tonight. Until then, we need to take care of one another. As a father, a pediatrician, and a physician-scientist, I challenge you all to do what is right for our kids and continue universal masking in schools. Thank you very much.
458 days. There are 458 days in. You have it.
Excuse me. It's...
Vaccine spreading the virus. You guys put together...
Just, just a minute. Citizens, we, we, citizens, citizens.
You didn't talk about that.
Citizens, we are more respectful, but I will ask you out. Point taken, I hope. Our next speaker.
So we have Dr. William Bordkosh from the UF Health Pediatric Critical Care.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, superintendent. I really appreciate your taking the time to listen to me, to us, and to the community. I'm really thankful to have everyone in the same room to discuss everything. I think it's probably the most important thing that folks in the community just kind of share their experiences and their perspectives. I am an intensive care doctor. I work in the pediatric intensive care unit at Shands Hospital. Today, I'm just going to, planning on focusing on sharing my recent experience and my past experience with COVID and sort of the changes that we've seen over the years. I'm not going to speak much more beyond that. So during the first wave, during the Alpha variant, I was very thankful to find that we did not see too many primary COVID infections. Most kids who were in the, in the unit, some of them were sick with COVID, but most of them just happened to have COVID and they had something else. And that was a relief. I was very happy to see, see that the kids weren't getting as affected as much. This new wave, this new variant is, it must be different. So I worked last night into this morning, and over the last few weeks, about a third of our kids in the unit are infected with active COVID. They are on non-invasive masks, so what that means is like a mask around the nose, covering the nose and the mouth, that help them breathe. They're on anti-inflammatory medications, they're bed bound. Many of them are in the hospital for one to two weeks. I apologize for having to correct Dr. Schatz, there has been one death in a child, a healthy child, not a complicated child, and I was unable to help that kid, and it happened very quickly. I am genuinely scared for the children. I'm scared for my staff. I'm scared for my family. I, I don't pretend to know what I don't know, but I do want to help in whatever way I can. And I know that the ICU is distinct from what most people experience in their day-to-day lives. So today, I just wanted to come forward and sort of share my experience with you. And I think that would pretty much conclude what I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Kathleen Ryan. She's with UF Health Pediatric Infectious Diseases.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, board members, and Dr. Simon, and thank all of the rest of you for being here today and supporting our community. For those of you who don't know me, I am a pediatric infectious disease specialist at UF and the associate chief of the division, and I was also a member of the Scientific Medical Advisory Council last year. I'm also the medical coordinator for the Control Flu Program, which brings you your flu vaccines in the schools. And we use that same infrastructure to bring like the COVID vaccine to the students in the schools, which we're doing. I'd like to recognize the outstanding leadership of our school board and our school superintendent for taking the important step that you took last, on August 3rd, to make school masks mandatory for the students for the first two weeks of school. So this shows that our community is willing to stand up and do the right thing. Our leaders, you all, are willing to do the right thing even with threatened significant consequences. They're willing to do the right thing to protect our children. As the late John Lewis, the activist, said, "Get in good trouble, necessary trouble." And you've just done just that. Our community has been on national news, international news, for doing what is necessary and what is right. So here we are, August 17th, reassessing where we are with the latest COVID-19 surge, reassessing whether we need to continue the mask mandate. So as you've heard, and I wish, I can tell you that we are in a better place than we were back then, but we aren't. So we need to see and continue to do what's right. We have seen a rise in cases in all age groups. The test positivity rate for the pediatric patients is almost 27%, as Dr. Schatz mentioned. So that means more than one out of four kids that are going to the doctor and getting tested are now positive. We have not seen that, that has been unheard of. We continue to have patients in the ICU. We consult on the majority of them. These children have been much more sick than anything that we've seen before. And luckily, we haven't had any more than the one death so far in the pediatric population. We are also concerned that we might see a rise in admissions for MISC, the Multi-System Inflammatory Syndrome in children, which generally occurs one to two weeks after they get COVID. And with the number of kids testing positive for COVID now, that's a real possibility. These kids are very sick when they come in, and they often require ICU care. So schools have only been in session for six, seven days, and there's already been over 100 cases in the students and 79 in the staff, and over 600 students are quarantined. This really reflects more what was happening in the community before school started than it does indicate that we've had spread within the classroom. So Marion County just announced that they're going to do a mandatory mask policy with an opt-out option. And I saw that in Palm Beach County, even though they started school only on August 10th, they've had over 500 cases since school started. So we need to continue to do the right thing to protect our students, the staff, the teachers, the bus drivers. We need to continue to use all of the tools in our toolbox. We need to continue the masking, physical distancing, hand washing, testing and contact tracing, isolating and quarantine, and that's a huge, a lot of things to do. And we need to continue to promote vaccination, and that's the most important thing. As Mr. Jimenez said, 90% of the patients that are in the hospital and are sick right now are unvaccinated. We're certainly not in any position at this point to let up what we're doing now. And we know masks help prevent the spread of infection. There's data coming out more and more that's documenting this. Wearing a mask helps, someone who's infected, limit the spread to other people. So there is perhaps a little bit of good news. We have some world-renowned modelers at the UF Emerging Pathogens Institute, and their most recent model suggests that this peak, this surge may actually peak in Florida and our community within the next two to three weeks. And then at that point, there's a rather sharp decline in the number of cases so that maybe by early to mid-October, we will actually be at pre-surge levels with the virus. And this has happened in other areas of the world where they've had this Delta variant surge. So for now, though, we really need to stay the course. We're not there yet. We haven't hit the peak. And if we let up on the masking, the peak will only be higher, and there'll be more hospitalizations, more potential deaths. So I think, given that timeline, that we need to really consider the mask mandate for at least an additional eight weeks to get to that point. And then we can reassess. We do have the UF students starting next week, and there has been some talk of whether our community could have a double peak because of that. We're hoping not. We're hoping enough of them are vaccinated and they wear their masks, or that's not to happen. So I hope, just as all of you do, that we'll get back to where we were before this surge. But for now, we really need to continue the mask mandate. And I know we need, we all want to continue to do the right thing for our students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Our next speaker is Dr. Amit Raval, and he will be actually through Zoom, and he is at North Florida Regional Medical Center in Emergency Medicine.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Board, Superintendent Simon, staff, and everybody there in the audience. My name again is Dr. Amit Raval. I was asked to share the current status of emergency services in our community. I've been an emergency medicine doctor and frontlines healthcare worker for over 12 years, right here in Gainesville. I'm also the Associate Medical Director for Alachua County Fire Rescue Emergency Medical Services, our local ambulance and fire service. Today, more than ever before in the pandemic, we are a critical mass. The number of COVID hospitalizations continue to surge locally, with both major hospitals up over 50% in terms of COVID patients admitted compared to when we last spoke two weeks ago. The Alachua County COVID dashboard, for the first time yesterday, crossed over 400 COVID patients admitted across UF Health and North Florida Regional Medical Center, and that includes over 150 patients admitted into the ICU. The number of cases in Alachua County is still increasing week over week, and the positivity rate in Alachua County rose last week up to 16.4% for all children and adults. And that's according to the state dashboard. As our pediatricians have just stated, we now consistently have multiple children who are admitted to our pediatric hospital and into our pediatric ICU. The hospitals, they're currently operating within surge plans. There's nothing normal about what we're doing day-to-day inside the hospitals. Elective surgeries are being canceled or postponed, and visitors are being restricted in certain areas. The men and women at our hospitals work round the clock to help care for our community. Our ambulance service, we're operating at high, high levels of transports, with some particularly busy days in the past few weeks being almost 25% higher compared to the average number of transports per day in 2020. It hasn't been uncommon in the last seven to 10 days to see 110 patients being transported a day by our local ambulance service, when the average across all of 2020 in the early stages of pandemic were between 85 and 90 per day. when the average across all of 2020 in the early stages of pandemic were between 85 and 90 per day. Projection data, including epidemiology data along with other forecasting models, they project a peak that is still out in front of us, as you've just heard, with a slow decline in the weeks that follow, and hopefully, a return to previous lower level of disease somewhere between eight and 12 weeks away. Again, these are projections. Close monitoring, potentially adjustments may be necessary as the situation unfolds. So I respectfully say to the board and to the community, let's not exacerbate this critical situation at this critical time. Masking, distancing, vaccine administration, and contact tracing, these are the tools. They must be employed to keep us from further overwhelming emergency capabilities, to bring relief to our residents and children, and to help the hospitals and frontline healthcare workers and all healthcare workers who are doing their very best to take care of this great community. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. And next, we have Commissioner Ken Cornell. He is the Chair for the Elatcha County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Dr. Simon, for the introduction. Honorable School Board Members, Madam Chair, it's a pleasure to be here again. I stood here two weeks ago and watched your courageous actions of putting the mask mandate in place for two weeks. I wanted to just share with you kind of what's happened at the board level. On that same day, August 3rd, the county manager implemented a policy for our staff requiring vaccinated status be reported to us by August 31st. She also implemented a mask mandate in all county facilities. On August 5th, I signed a local state of the emergency based on the data in our community. That action was ratified on August 10th by the entire board. And in addition to that, they extended the local state of emergency, and our board voted in support of your board based on the threats from Tallahassee to your funding. All of those actions were 5-0. It was a unanimous action of each of your county commissioners. Commissioner Anna Prizia, Commissioner Chuck Chestnut, Commissioner Mary Helen Wheeler, and Commissioner Mary Alfred. Today, we scheduled an emergency meeting to consider a countywide mask mandate, and that'll be held tomorrow in these chambers. Again, that was a 5-0 vote. Today, on your site, you reported you had 611 students in quarantine, 35 staff in quarantine. Today, our county manager reported that Elatcha County staff had 30 positive cases, 12 in quarantine, and additional six that are self-monitoring. To basically conclude, I'd like to thank you for listening to your local scientists and your local medical advisors. I'd like to thank you for working tirelessly every day to keep our kids safe while you monitor our local data. And whatever action you decide tonight, I ask you that you please continue to do all you can for the safety of your staff, for the safety of your children and families in the district while we are currently under a local state of emergency. Each of you are courageous, brave, and very much appreciated. Continue to take care of each other.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cornell.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
At the present time, he'd like to know.
What is your state of emergency?
So we have a local state of emergency that we put in place on August 3rd, which basically encourages folks under President Biden and Governor DeSantis's advice to get vaccinated. It also encourages each of our citizens to follow CDC guidelines, which are to wash your hands, continue to socially distance, and when you are inside, to mask. So that's our local state of emergency. Tomorrow, we will be considering an actual order which would require masks inside for any buildings where the public has access to.
Are you looking for a date?
Great question. So the question is, are you looking for a date? So under the recent legislation that the legislature passed and the governor signed, the county is limited to any orders for seven days, not more than 42 days, six weeks. So tomorrow, what we will consider is a seven-day order, which would then potentially be renewed every seven days, not longer than 42 days. Under that legislation, the governor has the ability to void that order at any time. We hope he would not if we decide to do that. There's no order right now.
So we can take your masks off?
No, sir. You're in a county facility, you are required to wear a mask, and you are currently in a county facility. If you take your mask off, you will be removed. Any other questions, Dr. Paulson?
No, that's it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Member Surtin?
So Commissioner Cornell, 42 days total or 42 days at any one time?
No, ma'am, it would be, it would be 42 days in total. In total.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, Dr. Simon?
I have a question. So after the 42 days, when you reach that status, if you needed, if we were still in an emergency situation, would you be able to extend at that point?
Not under the current legislation.
Okay, so we just go to...
Yeah, what we, these are things that we will be discussing tomorrow night, and in conjunction with the data that we will receive from our experts and that we're receiving tonight from yours, our idea would be to try to flatten the curve of the peak. And so again, this would be an order, a mandate. Right now, we have a local emergency action, which is a strong recommendation for our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
That's interesting.
Let's not come in back here.
Dr. McNeely, I'd like to take a moment. I'm just going to review the dashboard that's currently updated for our cases in our schools. I can add a little context to it, too. This is publicly available on our website. And I'll tell you, it is not fully up to date because the cases keep coming in. It is hard to keep up with it. But that's why I wanted to show you, because you can kind of see where we are and where we've been before.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's get it there. Still learning how to type. So right on our school board website, on our COVID page, we have our dashboard. It's under these links. I'm also going to go back to the vaccine page so we can talk about some of those opportunities there. So this reflects all of the cases reported in Elatcha County Public Schools since July 1st. So since this new Delta variant surge has started to really hit us. So within the last 14 days, there's been 162 students who have tested positive and 58 staff members. And you can see that this, last week, this is the first week of school.
So I just want to interrupt for one second, just so you know, this morning, that was 100 students.
So since morning, we added 62 students?
Yes. So that doesn't mean they took their test and it was positive, but it means they recently took a test and it was positive. So that's how these are being reported. To compare that to where we were before, this is all of our cases since the beginning of the pandemic. So within our first week of school, we have exceeded our highest point at any time last year. Now, I will say that these cases are not from school. These are cases where they tested positive because they were exposed in the home for, or in the community. So for example, on the first day of school, if a student tests positive, it's not a disease they contracted at the school. However, what that means is that we know that it's coming into our school. We know that parents are testing positive and dropping off their kids at different schools. We know that there's kids who develop symptoms in the middle of the day. There's kids who don't have symptoms at all.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And I looked at it quickly today. How, I'm, oh, sorry, I'll leave it. If I want, so you can hear me. Oh, the microphone, okay. Thank you. What's the ratio of older kids to the younger kids? Do you have a breakdown, a cutoff points? Maybe at third grade, sixth grade?
So these are all of our cases, and actually, anyone can do this on the website, is you can break it down by the school level. So if I look at just the elementary schools, that's where the spike is compared to everybody else. It's about the same.
Be interesting if you could give us information where the spikes are and the vaccines are for us.
So I can speak, from what I've seen, the spread is mostly in the, or not the spread, the cases are mostly in the elementary school. That's just due to the nature of the vaccination, because our older students are right now eligible for it. So they are testing positive less, but they are also less likely to be quarantined as well.
Can I ask, I know I'm asking, but I'm just, quarantine, how long do we, what, do we quarantine them, what's the timeline?
Sure. So that is something that we work with the Health Department on specifically. So if someone in a school building tests positive, and you're in direct contact with them, so that's defined by within six feet for 15 minutes. And that doesn't have to be 15 minutes all at once, it could be throughout the day. But if you're in that direct contact, if you test positive and you go home and you don't get tested, you can return after seven days with no symptoms. If you go home and you get a test, you can get a test that we provide at the schools, and you can get tested on the fifth day, and you can return after that if it's negative. So this is shorter than the quarantine times from last year, and this is directly from the emergency rules from the Health Department.
So if you get a test, either five or seven days quarantine?
Right. Now, if your symptoms are going on past that, you might, you know, you'll be evaluated. But that comes from the State Department of Health. And again, since the beginning of this, I thought this was kind of staggering, just the trend of where we were versus where we are now. And what that tells me is that we can't just do business as usual. It was flat for a pretty long time, and that was a great time. But we've got to change how we operate. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Simon to continue with the proceedings. Actually, if I could jump in for just one second. The vaccines we have available, if you go to any middle or high school or you're a parent, right on this page, the school board website where it says vaccines, we have this available in the schools. We also have it, all the links to the Health Department, to UF Opportunities. You have so many opportunities to get this and protect yourself and your family and your school.
I encourage parents to look at VAERS, the Vaccine Reaction. Many people are having reactions to the vaccine. Not in form of consent.
They sign a consent form.
No, but they're not being informed.
Excuse me. Chief Hamilton and Deputy, I don't have a name, but the next person, please escort them out. Thank you so much.
So I'll just add a few components, or a few things at the end, and I know Mr. Cole's mentioned it, but I'm sure that people will talk about parent choice in this discussion. One of the things that we are very much concerned about are some parent choices. We know that we have parents who have tested positive and have driven their children to school and left them at our school. We do appreciate that the masks were there because this helped us as far as making sure that we can slow the contagion as well as hopefully reduce our quarantines. I'm also asking families who are watching, if you are positive, please do not bring your children to school. If you have a child who is exhibiting symptoms and you've taken your child to get tested, please do not take them to school until you get the results of the test. These are all the components that we're dealing with, and this is why I think it's important that we have the masks, because we are not having everyone following the expectations and the rules of how to keep this from transferring. So I actually now leave this to you all to determine what you would like to do with the mask mandate.